It's Tuesday, September 22nd, 2021. 6:00 PM, we're in the lower theater. There is a Zoom link that can be connected. That being said, I'd like to call this meeting to order. First item of business is to approve the minutes of September 1st, 2021. Someone make a motion, please?
I move that we approve the minutes of September 1st.
I'll second.
Peter, Susan's on Zoom, so if you want to grab her by Zoom, she is available.
Okay. Sue, can you hear us out there?
I can hear you.
Okay. Just make sure you're still awake.
I'm here.
Okay. Motion remains seconded to approve the minutes. Are there any notations, corrections, deletions? Anything, anybody found with them? Hearing none, all those to approve the minutes would say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Motion carries. Next would be additions to the agenda for routine administrative matters and/or pressing matters that will require ratification at a future meeting. I have none. Sue, anything?
Nope, nothing.
Okay. Hearing none, move along. Public comment on items not on the agenda. There's three minutes a person. I see no public here. Sue, anything? Anyone out in radio land, TV land? Hearing none, we'll move on to the manager's report.
Thank you. Just a couple of items I know in the past, and Sue has asked me specifically about some of our Act 250 requirements based on our current gravel pit site. You know, we have a couple of different actions that have been going on. Obviously, for the town itself, we have to do renewals for the pit, and we also have areas of the pit that have closure. I did finally get back some information from Brian McAvoy from the state of Vermont. They do want us to submit what is called a 1111 permit, which is basically, you know, currently we have two access points that exit onto 103. He wants us to file with the state to improve those so that they can be considered use for minor commercial use, and they would have to have a paved apron. Not a huge amount of money, not a huge deal. I just have to go through the administrative paperwork and then have that project completed by the 22nd of December. That's the only other item right now that we have open on our end on the pit, so I will work on that with Andy. The second piece is the DEC has been reviewing the issues around the installation of our solar array. They had a couple of concerns about the Williams River and specifically about the wetlands determination boundary and then the riparian boundary of the Williams itself. So there is some language that they requested from the solar company, and the solar company has agreed to make sure that they follow the language that was prescribed by the DEC. As soon as that comes through to me in updated documents, I'll sign those, and then we'll be able to at least get that lease portion signed, which will trigger the terms, so there'll be a payment involved, and then I'll give you some sense of a schedule for construction. So not yet underway, but close. So at least we're through all the environmental and administrative type reviews. And I guess, Sue, is there anything else that you had concern about with the pit itself?
No, no, just that to make sure that we're not doing something that our Act 250 permit or renewal isn't allowing. So as long as they're okay with it, I know it's fine.
Okay. So yeah, that's just an update for that. So that's it for now.
Okay. Well, before we go on to the agenda, I notice you've got a couple of items in here. One for a truck from Patriots Western Star, and one for...
That's all part of a handout that we'll discuss under the finance update, so that's just some additional information.
Because if you're planning to take action, it's not on the agenda for action.
No, no, this is just informational for the board.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we didn't meet...
I need to walk you through a few things as we've been working through our finances.
Yeah.
This came up as part of our reviews.
Okay. I just didn't know if we needed to make an addition.
No, I'm not asking for anything tonight.
Okay. Moving on to the agenda. Approval for alcohol on municipal property. The notice in your packet is for the fundraiser for the Fireman's Memorial.
So basically, this was a request that, you know, they are having the premiere of the Fact TV presentation for Call to Duty, and there'll be two showings on Thursday. As part of that, they wanted to have the ability to serve alcohol so they could use that as a fundraiser as well to help with some of our expenses for development of the park. As you can see, it's moving along, and you can see quite a bit of the physical improvements have started to take shape. So I know it was a short notice, and I appreciate some of you getting back to me so we could get this underway. And now I just need a formal resolution from the board so that we can have it in the minutes as an action that the board took.
So somebody want to make a motion to approve the application?
I'm glad to do so. I move that we approve the application for use of alcohol on municipal property for the Call to Duty event, and that has been submitted by, I guess, Sean McGinnis.
I'll second.
Motion remains seconded to approve the application for the Bells Falls Firefighters Association Call to Duty premiere. It's a fundraiser for the Fireman's Memorial. Are there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Now we will have the update from the listers, a real estate data discussion.
Mr. Noble, you have the floor. There's a button down there. There you go, you're lit up now.
I need training. So here you are. I want to hand these out first. Pass that one down. It's up to you guys. I got thousands of them. First, I want to bring up a couple of administrative points so that if people ask you what's going on, you can explain it. The listers are currently out and about. You'll see us running around. We are doing a data accuracy study to determine that our property record cards properly describe everybody's property. That's a forerunner of our second thing. We are working on a decision as to whether to or not conduct some form of a partial reappraisal in view of the changes in property values. We have not decided what we're going to do at this moment, but it won't be long before we're finished. So those are two things you can look forward to. The next item is a document that you have in your hands. It's a 2020 equalization study. If you'll notice, the two numbers you guys are constantly looking at is the CLA and the COD. This is the latest issue. It is the number we'll be using or you'll be using to do anything from here on forward. If you look at that, it's very interesting, and we'll get into the effects when I talk about the next document. But we're holding at 95%, 95.5% accuracy with our listings. It's wandering up and down about a point and a half throughout the year. I think three months ago, it was 95 for the CLA. Stayed steady, but the COD went up to 19.8, which was not a good number. When it's 20, the state can demand that we have a reappraisal. At 16, that's the question. And the question becomes, should we do a partial to shrink that COD right now or not? And the only reason to shrink it would be to extend any future reappraisal. The reappraisal costs a lot of money. We can do the other forms for a lot less. So it's a question of economics, which is the smartest way to go. At this point, I'm not going to comment because I don't have the rest of the board to vote yet. So that's just there. But I will talk about the CLA and COD as we go into the report that I've prepared. Now, this report...
Before you go, can I ask one question on this first form that you just talked about?
Sure.
I noticed the two numbers are different. One's at 457, the other's at 478.
Where are you?
Is there some on that front sheet you're talking about, the equalization study?
I think you'll find one is real property and one is the personal property.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to make a clarification on difference. Okay.
Paul, one other question. Can you explain the COD, the coefficient of dispersion? What does that mean?
Okay. The CLA, first of all, is a measure of how accurately we are listing property for tax purposes versus the sell price that we receive in the market. That's the first one. The COD is how far off of that line do the sales fall? Most people don't understand that when you look at a CLA, it's a median number, meaning it's a calculation of a median. What happens is, there is no market value as $10. It's a range, and the COD describes the range. So when you look at the median, you're going to have, in this case, a 16% variance up and down past that median. That is the market. So you don't have like a can of peas is $1.36. Because if you go through a store and you look at the different brands of peas, you may find one is 95 cents and one is a dollar and a half. So the median would kind of indicate, well, of all the peas in the store, this is where the center is. So that's all I... Well, that's the critical one. That's, to us, that's the dangerous one. If we go off assessments too far and we have enough sales, they can swing that, and that's what's happening to us now. It's going up and down a point and a half. It'll swing that point and a half three times a year. We calculate it four times a year. Every quarter, we calculate the current CLA. At the end, April 1st, or aimed at April 1st is what we use, or you use, to set your tax rates. But don't get the idea that houses sell for exactly that number. You may look at the sales and never find the CLA number in the list. It's an interesting thing that don't know how many people understand. The calculation of the CLA, when you get all through, you divide by the number of sales, and the division is N minus 1. And nobody understands the minus 1. The minus 1 is the CLA. It is the number, it's N now becomes 1 less because there's potentially a non-existent number in the calculation. Now, when you have 100, 200, 300 samples, minus 1 is meaningless, but when you get down to small numbers, minus 1 can be really important. So don't, if you ever see that, if you play with these numbers, don't get all... I've been in classes where people spent the day trying to figure out what the 1 was. It's a mystery.
Thank you for explaining that.
Okay. Now, you want to go on to the document I just handed you? This has been rewritten about four times for various reasons. Reasons were that I was asked to supply an overview of the market in detail. That would take you three to four days, and I'm sure you would be tired. So this is going to give you a snapshot of what's going on, and then I will describe it, and the descriptions are on the next page. So the first part is, I looked at the sales for approximately three years, and you'll notice that you're going to say, why, there's four on this, on the sheet? Well, because we go April 1st, April 1st, so it's not a year, it's going to be a shift. And we end our appraisal for any year at April 1st. The tax year for the town is not April 1st. So there's a shift there. And this only represents what occurred in those years up to April 1st. So you could, if I calculated a CLA today, I guarantee it's going to be different. But anyway, what it shows you is interesting, and it tells you where this radical shift in housing prices occurred. And if you'll see, it's right in between 2018, 19. Well, that's where April is. So we're looking at a number for single families that sold at that thing at $101,800. That number is in keeping with probably going back five years. It's pretty close to that number for five years, going backwards. And then 2019, which is now one year moved up, it shot up to 162,000. That number was quite a surprise to everybody, and you're going to hear a lot of rhetoric about COVID did it, and COVID didn't do it. COVID accelerated it, but for a reason that even that escapes most of us. And the reason is this, that during the COVID outbreak, people were sent home to work from home. They found out it worked. They found out that you could work from home and be very, very productive, to the point that they had long-term dreams of living in a rural community, a rural country, and now they had the excuse to say, I can keep my job in Boston, but do it in Vermont. And then the thing continued, you notice, after that, we continued into the 2020 and 2021. What happened now, the last few months, we see a drop in the sales, but not the prices. In other words, seeing a drop in volume, that, you can see that goes from 50 to 40. And the reason for the drop in volume is our inventory is exhausted. Single-family homes in Rockingham, today, there is only one of them for sale for less than $100,000, and that one is a rehab that is completely gutted. The interior is done. After you cross that threshold, you're into the 160s to 200 and something, with a couple of houses for sale now at 700 and some thousand, and quite a cluster in the $400,000 range. They have not been purchased yet. Doesn't say they won't be, but they haven't been. Then you go to the two families. You're going to notice the same thing happened. The two-family houses followed the single-family houses. And that's a question, why? Because historically, that's not true. Historically, the two-family houses were selling house per house, size per size, 10% lower than the singles. Not happening anymore. The asking prices are much higher, and the prices they receive are higher. So you follow that a little further. And what happened is very interesting. If you look at 2020, 21, which is the big years, the sale price, the median price, didn't change much. So you're saying, what happened here? Well, what happened here is of the 10 that sold in those two years, seven of them were converted to single-family houses. They discontinued renting the second apartment. Now, surprise of all, today, I got a note at 1 o'clock with a question that somebody had a house, they wanted to convert it to two-family. But it's, I know the building. I think it's going to be a single person, probably a schoolteacher-type person who does, will live and work in the village that this occurred. But I haven't seen many conversions in reverse. Nobody adding apartments, most of them taking them out. Then the three families, I watch carefully. The first two are, it tells you depressed sales. They were literally foreclosure properties, which did not meet the criteria for statistical analysis. We could not use them generating a number. And then you get down to the four that sold in 2020 and 2021. They held steady at 94,000. They were also not, they were in poor condition. They need a lot of work. And that's a pretty stable thing for the three families. And then you go, flip the page, the top, the top list is four families, and there have been no four families sold in the last three years. There's a reason for that. I've talked to some of the people who buy these things. Quite frankly, they are not happy with the rental business, and they're not investing in them. They're putting their money in other corners. So that's the story of houses that we define as residential. That's any house that has no more than four living units. Once they go to five, they're commercial buildings, and the rules change. At this point in time, there have been no sales in fives. But picture who owns most of the bigger properties. They're very well-established renters, and they're pushing, well, some of the properties have 30, 40 housing units. So they're big business. This is not the local guy who's just renting locally. So if you look down below that, you see the special notes. These are notes regarding what I just told you. I've mentioned a couple of them, told you where the sharp increase is, showed you the two families follow, three families remain stable, four families not doing anything. The single and two families showed that marked increase in sales value over this growth period. It's interesting to note that they were similar. It kind of tips me off because if you wanted to play with it, you might just transition those two families into the single-family class, but we classify them as to what they were the day they were sold. If you change it the next day, then it would change for next year's grand list. So I think you're all aware that we live around April 1st.
Dead life.
The rest of it, we just survive. I showed you that in 2020 and 2021, we're having this breakpoint in the sales volume and not in the price. That's caused by dramatic shortage of houses on the market. That is not unique to Rockingham. That is happening nationwide and particularly statewide, that there is a shortage of single-family houses. It goes one step further when I turn the page, so we'll talk about that in a minute. The real change we've seen, A, is high-speed internet. Talking to buyers, they will tell me, if it doesn't have high-speed internet, I won't buy it. It's that bland. It's just the end of the story. If it doesn't have high-speed internet, I'm not going to buy it.
I just read all those responses. I think it's very interesting that the responses that come back negative.
Oh, you've gone ahead of me now.
Well, no, but I mean, you're right in that area, and you're talking about, you know...
I know.
The feed, but I mean, when you look at those four, five, six noes, I mean, it's interesting. There's no rail service, they don't use that. They don't use RiteSure facilities. It was just interesting that the noes you got, the yeses are pretty...
I was, when we get to that page, I was not stunned, but quite interested that some of the answers I got, quote-unquote, fell off the table, because everybody else was telling me that's not true. And all of a sudden, when you add them up, yeah, sorry, it's happening. And the other thing to the internet is, go to the bottom paragraph. The current marketing technology that's being used is so different than it was back 10 years ago when I was in the real estate business and I was a broker. And what happened was, we were putting ads in magazines, ads in newspapers, and now there are ads on this thing called Zillow, and there's two other companies that expose everything we have to the entire United States and possibly greater area. We're getting offers sight unseen from California. We're getting what appears to be an auction instead of a sale, and it's, frankly, to some degree, it's illegal. I mean, when you get an offer, you're supposed to hand it to the owner right away. So how can you hand them three or four? What happens is that the Zillow, they don't tell you who's selling it. So what happens is, one guy sees the ad, the other guy sees the ad, they look on the internet, find a local broker, not the same one, they give the offer to two brokers, and the two brokers present it to the listing broker at literally the same time. And if you don't know that's happening, if the guy comes in with the first offer, higher than the second guy by a dollar, the seller has the right to choose who buys. Once you go over the asking price, he can pick, and that's what they're doing. They're sitting there waiting. I'll think about it. Let's wait till three more offers come in. So it's a little out of control, but the brokers are pretty straight. And the brokers have done one terrific job of putting these ads together. Their ads are generally written by somebody who has really spent some time with the building. They may have even already had a building inspection. So they're pretty accurate in what they describe to the public, and they actually now give you drone pictures cruising around the neighborhood. They go in the house, you walk through the house, they prep the house, they clean it up, it looks beautiful. So now you turn to the next page. This is, I think, Rick, you triggered this.
Okay.
This is rental housing, and so we have a list of rental housing, which tells us the house, the number of units, and where it is. And so it'll tell you here that we have a total of 1100 and some houses, rental units. In other words, if you've got three apartments in a house, that's three units. And then you move forward, and Saxetera has 71, Will Rockingham has 47. We think that number is pretty accurate. There is a problem. We don't know how many units are three bedrooms or two. We haven't, we're getting there because we're going to, we're going to find out, but that's a mystery because we've looked for houses that a family wants, apartments they want. If they have children, they like three bedrooms. If they have children, they like three bedrooms. They have a girl and a boy, and the parents. So they really like to have three bedrooms, two bathrooms. If you look carefully, that runs to be a house about 1,400 to 1,600 square feet. And that's, we can guess by just telling you by the size. There's correlation between floor footprint and, and the number of rooms and bathrooms, et cetera. There's really solid correlation. We can't talk about that much more. You ask a question.
Yeah.
I answered you this afternoon.
Right. Can I, can I move to another question?
Sure.
So you, you told me that most of the single-family sales are happening in rural Rockingham and Saxons River, the vast majority.
Correct.
Okay, those two areas lost 8.5% and 15.2% of their population over the past 10 years.
Probably.
So can we infer that the people who are buying these houses don't have kids? Or are retired or what? I mean, because there's, with the population dropping and the number of sales going like this.
I haven't checked that, but I think your inference is pretty close.
Okay, so I'm wondering sort of what that means is we try to make our community more attractive to young families. Are there any levers we can pull?
Um, you're going to get personal. Well, I mean, here's, let me explain that. Everything I've told you is information that the rest of the board, lister's board, would 99% support. Then there comes stuff that I see that I may say, okay, but. And always watch, watch out for the buts because that becomes personal.
Okay.
It's my opinion of what I see. It's not that the other two listers have agreed or not agreed. So one of the problems is financing. We've outraged the ability of a lot of local folks to buy these houses. I'll give you, you know, for all the things we do with the big numbers and lots of formulas that are complex. But quite frankly, the answer to most questions is simple, and there are checkpoints. So there are ways that we can just look at a house and say, that's not right. It's not right. I don't care what you say, it's not right. And same thing goes for a market. We'll look at the market and say, I don't understand this. So there's a check, a way to check quickly. And the way to check quickly is that if you take the value of a house, $100,000, you can't spend, it's, if you get it what it sold for, what it, what it's, we say it's worth, it's three times that is about what it's worth. So three times your monthly income is your monthly payment. That's, if it's, if you see it can be financed for that number, you take a monthly income multiplied times three, it comes out to 1,000. It means you can go to the bank and feel fairly confident that you can get a commercial loan, I mean, a conventional loan, 20% down, have a good credit rating of over 740. You got, you got a shot at it. That's not happening with a lot of our people. You know, we talk about mediums and means and all this stuff. Well, it's based on what's known as a standard deviation curve. And that's that funny curve you see in all kinds of science. There's an assumption. And the assumption is that what our data is, is a standard curve. That is not correct. Our data is not a standard curve. And the problem of this, what we do have is what I call a skewed curve. Housing prices are skewed to the high side. Income is skewed to the left, to the low side. And so when you look at that median, this tells you a good story, that the people on the left-hand side of income cannot afford the houses that go above it. Then you count the houses. How many houses are above and below? And you're going to find that the inventory is even smaller than you think it is. And the illustration for that is that you have this one house at 99,000 currently on the market in Rockingham, and everything else is up in the 140s, 160. So it, it excludes. Now, what can you do about it? Well, A, there was a successful program that we didn't like, but it was the Covenant House program. And if you look at the 14 that we have in the village of Bellas Falls, they have been well-maintained. They look good. Those folks are members of the community. They live here. They got kids in school here. And they will be, as you see in the questionnaire, the people that are working within 30 miles of Bellas Falls. They're not going 200 miles. So the vast majority of these people, we need to find better ways of financing houses. And it may include some, I guess we'd call governmental influence, like Covenant Housing was that the Wyndham Windsor Housing Trust owned the land. And that was the deposit. It was secured by the Wyndham Windsor, Windsor people. Right away, it took away the problem of the 20% down. And they had, the banks had the safety net that if the house came to sale, Wyndham and Windsor would buy it back. So, boy, the risk factor went down for the banks. I haven't seen a great effort in that direction here.
Okay.
And I don't see in the direction of a lot of our subsidized housing where we're pushing for more than one apartment, one-bedroom apartments. And that limits the market for the family. It limits the market for the young, young upcoming person.
Okay.
So part of my objective with this, with this report is not to tell you what to do, but to tell you what to look at. And then figure out, can we, can we not address that issue? That's past, it's not in my, it's not in my playpen.
All right. And so a normal market, when prices are going up like this, more product would be produced to meet the demand.
Got a problem with that, too.
You've told me that, that current use keeps a lot of, I mean, we're not subdividing because people who pull land out of current use have to pay a penalty. So, and you said there are, what, two houses have been built in the past two years?
Actually, no. I checked this morning. That's an interesting build thing because it will show you another trend. We have built five new houses in three years. Three of them have been built by residents. They are all what I call normal working man's houses. They're running in the 120,000 to 160,000-dollar house. Every one of them, in some way, is connected to a contractor. They're family members. The contractors are building them for them, and thereby the labor cost drops. And they're on land owned by parents or members of the family. There aren't many built, well, one is built by an, that I'm fully aware was built by an outer stater. And I was surprised because the names didn't ring a bell. When you saw the name, it didn't fit. But it turns out it's a family-owned parcel of about 350 acres. And, and the family gave up 20 acres to this one person to build a new house. And that house is essentially in the 800 to 900,000-dollar house.
Wow.
It's amazing. And it was built with cash. No, no fooling around with banks. Just build it.
That'd be nice.
But that happens, and it's not uncommon. Because outer staters, who I've talked to, come in having sold a house in the suburbs with the dream of living in Vermont, a quaint little place. But they sold a house that would cost $500,000 there. They can buy it for 100 or 250 here. So they actually have, first of all, they have incentive, tax-wise, to put the money into another house.
Within two years.
Home.
Yep.
And secondly, they want to go to the country. Now, some of them are going to leave. They don't like it, but most of them are going to stay. What you get is on the transfers, we get a note that says, what are you going to do with it? And it's permanent residence domicile. There is a new trend. I hadn't seen it at all in 14 years, and now it's getting common. They're buying it and it future uses investment. They'll call it an investment. Not, they're not going to live in it. And I've talked to those folks. Depending on your tax account, there are some breaks to call it an investment. Put it into a personal LLC. You can now depreciate it, which you and I can't do at a domicile. And you hope that it's going to accrue more money as time passes. So there are those folks that are pretty sharp, and they're, they're using it as an investment. And you ask them why, and they say, because I'd rather take a 3% gain on growing this house than a 0.01% gain in my money in the bank. They're just uncomfortable with the current bank-type stuff. And stock markets scare some folks, so they don't go there.
Terrible.
It's happening.
All right.
That covers basically that stuff. The questionnaire, this is your homework. Because if you notice, I ask you to take it home, fill it out, and bring it back. The questionnaire is on the last page. The answers that I gave you on this page is just a selection. But my goal with this was I sent it out to about 50 purchases over the past few years. I wanted to know what the mentality of the buyer was. The numbers don't tell you that. They do if you add them up. But when you just talk to one person or another, it doesn't really count. So I ask them questions, and some of them surprised me. The one, one thing that surprised me was that out of the total number, I found no one who was interested in skiing. They didn't care. They said, no, that's a weekend thing. We'll drive to that. What they wanted, they like outdoors. They like privacy. They demand internet. They are absolutely interested in the interstate. Do I have access to the interstate? Could I get to the interstate? What's that for? Well, my kids live in Connecticut. They're going to come visit me. I want a direct way here. I want to go see my kids. I'm going to get on the interstate, go down the road. The interstate's critical. And some of the folks who tell you they work from home or within 30 miles from home have jobs that require them to travel. And what they want to do is get on an interstate, go to a close destination, and then work throughout the city or town and come home. They don't want to drive up Route 5 from Hartford, Connecticut. And so that's what it's all about. They, they really love the fact that they can get out of town and back in. There was a question in there that'll make you laugh. It's about sidewalks. Sidewalk's important, and I was, I know where the questionnaires come from. Nobody else does because you'll notice the questionnaire is blind. There's no name on it. But you ask them, you told me you wanted sidewalks. You live on Parker Hill. And they say, oh, yeah, we need sidewalk. And the trick was that a lot of those folks have been here in the winter. They don't want to walk Parker Hill in the winter because when a snowplow comes up the road and they're walking, this is terrifying. And so they, they get in their car, come to Bellas Falls Park in the parking lot, and they walk a loop around town. And they stop and get a cup of coffee and take a break. And then they go back to their car and go home. And they want sidewalks. And a lot of the older folks find it easier to walk on sidewalks than on a dirt road. Fascinating. But I said, you want sidewalks? And the answer was, yeah, absolutely, I want sidewalk. So that, that's a plus. And then, and then that relates back to the guys buying two-family houses, who all of them are in Bellas Falls Village. Their comment is interesting. We think of Bellas Falls as a kind of a central hub for, for this. It's the city of Rockingham, right? They don't do that. Bellas Falls is a rural community. It's out in the country. They have a different perspective. It's not traffic like we have down in suburbia. It's, but it's rural. You can see the trees. You can, and surprisingly, they, they like the idea of being in closer-knit groups. And they're usually older folks. They're also the ones converting to single-family. And they're saying, no, no, all the extra bedrooms are for the grandchildren when they come to visit. Every, these folks, they've done their homework.
Yep.
And what we're seeing here is occurring, at least I know as of today, but they're occurring in California. They're bailing out of California for the same reasons. And now I'm surprised Arizona's having trouble with this for a slightly different reason. But there are folks moving out, especially older folks, who have chosen the fact that we've lived in this rat race long enough. It's time to go. And we have a lot of folks coming back who have roots here. They moved out of here 30 years ago, 40 years ago, for better jobs. But they remember their roots. They played on the BF football team. I'm going home. My friends are there. Even though I haven't seen them for 30 years, my friends are there. So there's a reason. How to attract these folks? Boy, they want, one of the questions I think you answered it, Scott, was culture. They are interested in a little bit more culture than we're used to. I think that's why I look at Main Street Arts as one of the drawing points of Saxons River. It really is. And they look for that. And when they find it, they will pay a premium to stay there. So then on the next page, this is your homework. There are all 27 questions here. You can answer them. I would suggest you sit down and think them over because they're not just simple yes or no answers. They tell a story as you fill them in. But put yourself in the position of somebody coming here to buy something. And then, just for a minute, think about why you're here. Because you had every right in the world to move, and you stayed. So if you do that, I'm sorry to tell you, the answers on two sheets of paper are going to look the same. We're not different than the other guy. And that's about all I can tell you, unless you have questions. You're invited to come up to the office if you want information. We have it. We can get it. We have programs written now that we can actually zero in and examine the villages. We can examine the whole town. We can examine neighborhoods. We could examine houses individually. And we can examine, the critical thing I'm looking at now is the effect that depressed housing has on the adjacent houses. So we can actually go in and look at three houses. If one of them is bad, does it affect the marketability of the two adjacent houses? Three, four, the street, the block? So we can, we can dig all that up. It's all part of our study to move forward for next reappraisal.
Well, Paul, I just wanted to say that we're really lucky to have you in the, in the lister's office. I understand you're one of the most credentialed listers in the state of Vermont.
The four of us.
In the, yeah, in the, in the office, the whole office. Yeah, I know, you're a team.
No, there are four of us in the state.
Oh.
One of us works for the state. One of us works for the state. One of us works for the state, one of us works for Nemrick, one of us owns their own company, and Bellas Falls has got the four.
Wow. Okay, well, we're grateful for your, and I found this report really interesting.
I was going to just say, thank Paul for, it's very informative. I know he likes to ramble, but when you ramble, you get a lot of information in between that you think you want to ask, and he's already answered your question before you get there.
Exactly.
And I think this information here is really important to look at, because that makes you think of, as the question comes up, well, how do you attract people here? Well, then, when you fill out the questionnaire, some of those answers start to become more clear and relevant to you, instead of spending money on this, that, and the other, maybe we're looking in the wrong direction. You know, I mean, you know, what, you have to ask yourself, why would people want to move here? What do we have to offer them? And that's the question you need to answer.
And particularly young families.
Well.
You know, I mean, that's.
True. And that doesn't, I mean, you know, jobs, as you can say, is one thing, but that may not be the total answer. I mean, as Paul says, people are coming back here.
Yep.
Because the thing, and it's a rural area, and that's what people have done, headed to the rat race. I mean, I wouldn't go to Boston, I wouldn't go to Boston, I was driving school bus, no way in half. I mean, yeah, I just hate driving in that city traffic, I have to, I will, but if I have my options, I'll find someplace else to go. But anyway, so let's move on here. Paul's taken up enough of our time, and we appreciate it. And if anyone has, Paul says, anybody wants any further information, feel free to stop up or give them a call, and they'll be glad to entertain you.
Thanks, Paul.
We don't turn anybody down, and we have a fundamental business plan up there that I put it in effect, just a little bit of pressure. Basically, we try to answer any type of questions we can have.
Okay, so let's move on to Article 3 on the agenda, and that's the proposed sale of real estate, 34 Old Terrace, that's a thing we took up the last meeting or two. So we now have a full gambit here of information, so, Paul, you want to take the lead on, Scott, you want to take the lead on this one?
Sure. So there's a couple things here. So I had attached as well, just for informational purposes, you can see what the DRB and zoning has done relative to, this will be a proposed subdivision. And so the question that we have to answer is, we do own a piece of this proposed subdivision, and there is a proposal in front of you to transfer this property to that developer who is local. They're not local Bellows, but they're local Vermont, they're from Brattleboro. And the goal is to then redevelop those, which is a difficult site, if you guys know the site we're talking about, there's steep slopes, there's not a lot of space, it's been difficult to try and come up with a reasonable reuse for this. And I think it also a little bit fits into the conversation that we're having tonight, because these proposed houses sort of fit within this conversation that we're having in terms of, the goal with these three houses is to make them reasonably affordable, so within our range that we were talking about with three bedrooms, so it would be good for families. Does not have a lot of land to maintain, which also appeals to another portion of the market, right? People that might be looking to maybe relocate or downsize to something they don't have to maintain. And it also then puts this back on the tax rolls, as this property has not been performing for a period of time. And when we get to our joint meeting, you'll see, it'll show up on our delinquent tax list, so it'll be one of these that we'll have to go and at some point discuss abatement. But this is the first step in a process, if you agree, to start the ball-rolling on this proposed subdivision.
You open for comments?
Sure.
I think it does fit into our earlier conversation quite nicely. It's affordable housing, it puts property back on the tax roll, and it improves the quality, I think, with new construction, the way it's described at least, it looks like it's going to be relatively well-built. So it seems to check all the boxes for me.
Yeah, I don't have any opposition to it. It sounded like a good deal, it's just like, you know, when you discount some taxes and abate some stuff, to get, a good example is the Hedy Green Motel, look at what that looks like now.
Yep, I remember.
Compared to what it looked like before. And I understand there's, they have renters in there already, in the southern section. They can only rent out five because of the fire inspection, they haven't done a code inspection on the rest of the building, but, yeah, I mean, you know, that's one way to increase, like you say, the housing, and it's a good way to do it.
Right. There's also, I think, as part of this transaction, there's another piece of property that I believe the developer is also pursuing with an out-of-state owner at the moment. So, and then a piece that they own, so there'll be three when it's all said and done. I think the only thing maybe that we might want to recommend is that you agree to pursue the purchase and sale agreement, but that you also maybe put in a stipulation about the proposed owner, which would be the future local LLC, would then have to appeal any past due taxes to the BCA. And then you might want to include some sort of time restriction, depending upon how you feel about a reasonable time for that developer to get a building permit and actually begin construction. And the reason is, obviously, you want to incentivize them to not just sit on this, but to continue moving forward, especially given that, I think we want to see that progressing, and not just sort of sit in a stalemate. So those would be the only things. I did not add those, I just wanted to see how the board felt. This purchase and sale agreement did get reviewed by our attorney, so he has no problem with the form. He did think that it made sense, based on our conversation, to maybe add some of those additional requirements, but he did not think that that was a make or break for the sale. He just simply thought that that would protect the board if there was any criticism or opportunity for people to, you know, to come back and say, well, we didn't improve the situation, you know, it remained as a, you know, an undeveloped piece of property.
Did I see a two-year period was suggested somewhere, as the time might give this guy to have begun construction?
I think it makes sense, and that would be to get a building permit and then to begin construction. I think you want to give them, you know, 24 months to do that. Obviously, you know, not a lot goes on in the winter, so you're really talking about spring and then through the next construction season.
Yep, that makes sense.
So you need a motion to approve the purchase and sale agreement and authorize you to sign documents to that effect?
Did you want to add anything to that, Peter? Would you like to make some additional requirements in terms of?
Well, I noticed your letter says that they got 24 months, I think that's what we discussed earlier, that they, I think in the abatement hearing, when this came up, it was, they would contingent upon activity either completed or started it within two years.
Correct.
After the abatement.
I don't think we said completed, I think they said it had to be started.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
I said, one, either or, so.
So, okay.
That being said, if someone wants to make the motion to approve the purchase and sale agreement with and authorize manager to sign the agreement?
I move that we authorize the town manager to transact the purchase and sale agreement with the future.
Future local LLC would be the buyer?
With future local LLC for the properties at 34 Old Terrace in Bellas Falls.
And authorize manager to sign.
Oh, yes, and then authorize the manager to sign necessary documents to complete that sale.
I'll second the motion.
A motion was made and seconded to approve the sales and purchase and sale agreement for the LLC, future local LLC, and have the manager, authorize the manager to sign any and all the documents.
Peter, is there any, you know, public notice we have to put out for this? What's the legalities here for this?
I checked with Steve Ancuta, and because it's already gone through a process, he did not feel that we had to do a separate VSA process, where we have to give it a 30-day requirement and make it eligible for a permissive referendum. So he felt that we were okay with that.
Okay.
Okay, and everybody's comfortable with that 24 months, they have to get something going within 24 months of the sale purchase?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I don't know if, luckily he'll get a contractor in 24 months.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor would say, yeah, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those in the polls nay, motion carries. Okay, here comes another fun article. Article 4, Addendum to RED lease for, lease for BFOH to Bellas Falls Opera House, operations update Bellas Falls Opera House.
So I guess we've been working with RED, and we're implementing some aspects of operations that we had discussed earlier in the spring and summer. We're well into the Spectrix ticketing system. We are, we were successful with acquiring the cultural facilities grant, if you remember previous conversations, so we're working on specifications or requirements, which will include enhanced theater lighting, some enhanced safety lighting, so we can raise and lower the house lights, and some other electrical work. So we are updating those systems, and we're very glad that we got that grant, that's, if you recall, a 30,000 grant, but also required a local match. We still have monies that we're still eligible to spend through the Shuttered Venue Grant, so that's going to help pay for the Spectrix system. I'm not sure it can be our, it doesn't appear that it can be used as our match for the cultural facilities grant, but I'm going to double-check that before I give you a final word on that. I couldn't get clarity from, you know, Shuttered Venue, of course, is, you know, small business association, and they don't speak to, you know, the folks that do cultural facilities, so I'm trying to get opposing forces, it's like two magnets, right? And they just sort of do this.
Yeah. I hear you. Government.
Yeah, you know.
At work.
So we're working on it. So I don't have that final answer for you, but what this does, this addendum does, I think, is further develop our relationship. Again, we have this umbrella, so we still have the ownership and the management, and those pieces are still run through the town, so the board obviously has the control of that through their policies and procedures. We have a committee that we're still working on with Opera House Committee, so they're involved, and will continue to be involved as these issues come forward. And then, really, what RED does is fill in for the gaps, because as we talk about government, there are some things that we can do pretty well in government, and there are things that we don't do so well in government. Entertainment industry, and live events, and those types of activities are not our wheelhouse. And so I rely upon the folks that RED and their management experience to help us bring in the kind of cultural events that we were talking about, that people are excited about, hopefully looking for more events. You know, we have our fingers crossed that we don't run into any kind of state-related mandates in terms of using our space, because we've been very encouraged by just the most recent programming that we're doing with things like this David Sedaris event this week, and ticket sales, and some of those are fairly strong for that event. Movie sales, and we'll get into operations later, are not really following as robust as we had hoped, but I think that there are ways that maybe we can address that as well. But this piece really is sort of the next step of the relationship, which will help us keep the, keep the programming pieces of the theater more, I think, more in tune with that marketplace, and that's a market that, again, we are not, as government people, we're not as attuned to, and I think we're going to rely on RED and their ability to help us with keeping this theater a viable operation. And I understand that we're still working towards our goal of financial viability, we're not there yet. I think the board understood that when we undertook this process, we said we're going to take a two-year window and give it a hard look after two years and see where we are. So this is another step in that process as well. So with that said, I know that I think Charlie and I think Jen are online, I don't know if they have any questions or anything they want to add to that, that was just sort of a 10,000-foot view, but I'll certainly let them jump in.
I want to jump in just to say that Jen, something stopped working, she got kicked out of, knocked out of the meeting, she's now in the waiting room, waiting to get back into the meeting. So whoever is moderating that can let Jen back in, that'd be great. Don't you love the technology?
There we are, we're back.
There she is.
Sorry about that, Jen, I hope that, there we go. She's back in our Brady Bunch box here.
Mm-hmm. Brady Bunch. You're dating yourselves.
I know. That's what it reminds me of every time I see.
Exactly, like the opening. So are you, you guys open for questions, or do you want to say?
That was it for what I was having.
You asked them if they had any comments, and we haven't heard anything, so I was just waiting, because I have a list of questions and concerns.
Absolutely. I just, I'm feeling like we've got a pretty good team in place, we're making progress. The Wednesday night classic film series has been wonderfully supported by local business and individuals, and that is fully subscribed, as it has never been before. The online advert, or the on-screen advertising program has, it's been a slow but steady build on that. Movie, first-run movies are not doing well nationwide, and they're not doing well here. COVID, of course, has continued to throw a curveball at us. What we were hoping to, you know, we were hoping that people wanted to go out. We've got a good house for the David Sedaris show, there's another, there are another couple of live events, but live events are not at the moment. I don't feel comfortable packing that building with huge numbers of people due to COVID. But overall, I am really encouraged, we've got a good team with Tim and Jen and Sean Roberts, who is doing, who's helping with the live event coordination. I just, I really feel we're poised to move things to a much, to really turning the Opera House into the economic driver that it can be for the downtown. And what Paul Noble was talking about, about people wanting culture, the Opera House is going to be the driver of that, you know? So it's, and we're so blessed to have Gary Fox, having gotten us the, or whoever is responsible for the Shuttered Venue Grant, I know Gary played a big, big role in that, and working with Scott has been wonderful. So I'm feeling pretty good about things.
All right, well, seeing as I mentioned, I have some concerns and questions, I think I'll start off, and I'm reading, I went through this about three different.
Peter, you want me to answer as you go, or do you want to do your whole?
No, we'll take them as we go, Charlie, that's the best way to get them.
Okay, as we go, okay.
All right.
Jen is here to jump in too, so.
Yep, not a problem.
Go for it, go for it.
Well, my first question goes back to what Scott just said, the committee meeting, the Opera House Committee's been meeting to go over this arrangement, but I, we've never seen any notice of meetings, is there secretive meetings going on, or is not everybody being asked to attend these meetings? I know Ellen's on that committee, she's never received any notice of meeting, so I wonder who's actually been doing this thing.
Well, that's, that's, that, the Opera House Committee is a committee with the select board, I'm not involved in the Opera House Committee. You'd need to ask Rick about that.
I've, am I the chair? Susan, you and I are both on the Opera House Committee. Am I the chair or who's the chair?
It's up to the committee to nominate their own chair. The select board doesn't.
I don't know if we went that far.
I don't think they have in terms of, there hasn't been a noticed public meeting. It's more been conversations between Charlie and Susan and Charlie and Rick and then trying to establish how we want to, to fill in with the committee as we go forward. So you're correct, Peter. We have not had a formal meeting with the Opera House Committee.
Okay, so we're being asked to look at our committee, at an addendum here that's been organized by three people basically instead of a whole committee.
Well, let me, Peter, 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 my friend, my friend. The Opera House Committee is supposed to be charged with building out a physical plant of the Opera House. The policies of the Opera House are not the purview of the Opera House Committee.
Okay, well, I'll leave that where it lies. It's out there now. But on this agreement, bottom paragraph, before you get into your numbered items, is mentioned addendum four. There is no addendum four that we got in our packet. I found, I think, what is, I think is the addendum four, which is a form that I think you may have made out. It says contract between Town of Rockingham and it says TOR will pay RED dollar a year. And it's got, what, any, either entity is going to be responsible for it. Is that the addendum four you're mentioning or is there a new one because of?
Where does it mention the addendum four?
In your first paragraph, actually the second paragraph if you go down. The very last line says, where as the town and RED have established mutual goals for the BFOH, they are set out in addendum four. Well, there's no addendum four.
Well, Peter, Peter, you got me there. You got me good, my friend. There's no addendum.
I've got an old one that I dug out and I think that's what it is.
Oh, no, it's addendum, it is addendum, all the addenda are added on the proposal. So it's addendum in the packet, addendum one, addendum two, addendum three. There is no addendum four.
We could strike that, Peter, for the sake of.
Well, there's some items on it that raise some questions. That's why.
Right. There is no addendum four that's part of this agreement. So I think it was just an earlier, going through versions, and I think it must have been just a.
I know I'm a perpetual disappointment to you, Peter. I screwed up there. There is no addendum four. My human flaws have yet again come to the fore.
All right. Another question that we need to clarify that the lower theater is, is or is not part of this agreement and is, is or is not under RED operation.
RED is not operating the Opera House, Peter.
You mean T, okay.
RED is providing, is kind of providing consultant help to the Opera House. We're not operating the Opera House.
Part of this agreement though, that it's here is mentioned that there is some reference to the use of the lower theater. So that's why I'm just trying to clarify that.
Oh, sure. The lower theater, when it is not being used for municipal meetings, is part of the totality of the Opera House.
We haven't looked at it as a separate programming entity, Peter, in any, any type of strategic planning. It really exists sort of as an addendum to shows or to other types of programming. We have not gotten into that portion where we could formally program this space. I think if we get to that point, we probably have a good problem and that is we've got more programs than we have space to put upstairs.
Which, which raised the question, you know, could, could the town needs get down and get booted out of this room because the operation of the theater needs to have this and we're relegated to some corner closet, which is not.
No, ultimately the town.
No, I'm just, when you read through this, those are the questions that pop up in your head because it's not clearly defined.
No, I mean, for example, we're still going to have annual meeting and we'll probably have it upstairs and, you know, and that'll be just a normal course of business. And that's one of those items. It's just like we have meetings here and those will continue as a normal course of business. So I don't see any conflict with that. And we'll continue. So if we change our dates or we change our frequency or we change whatever our requirements are, you know, Opera House and RED, I'm sure will be accommodating.
Okay, so the 90-day notice doesn't really apply to this, this particular room at this current time?
Oh gosh, no. I mean, in terms of municipal meetings, no, no. It's just if that is, and we can certainly put that in specifically if you want.
The 90-day. I mean, it's just not in there and it's not clearly defined. So I'm just trying to get this clear in my head before we.
Yep, that's good.
I would think at some point we'll come back and again, this will probably be one of these items that we'll have to talk to the committee about because this space that we're sitting in now will require additional improvements in order to be used for any kind of public type of, you know, substantial programming. So I don't think we're anywhere near that. I'm still trying to get the main theater upstairs up to speed.
I understand that. I know there's, there's several thousand.
I got plaster falling off the walls. I got things that are still happening. So this is, this is a way down the road, over the horizon kind of an issue.
Because the only reason I ask is in the past, the, the lower theater has been used by groups that leased this. I mean, MSA and their productions have been now using this for their costume changes and all this stuff.
The green room.
You know, that has to come into effect, that's all.
Nope.
And then, you know, it doesn't mention anything to Bellas Falls Village uses this, of this facility, so.
I think it's in municipal use.
Is this a town entity or, I mean, you know, it's not spelled out. That's what I'm just saying.
Sure. Well, any municipal use, right? Because we have other boards that do meet in this building. Now, for the most part, planning commissions meeting upstairs. Other historic preservation, those types of folks are meeting upstairs on the third floor. But if they wanted to use this space, they could certainly do that. You know, we try to coordinate that as best we can.
It's not really clear in this document that all revenues generated, that generated by movie ticket sales and facility rentals shall be, should be paid to Town of Rockingham. Is it in the document somewhere? I understand that the town's operating, but it doesn't really say that the revenue is specifically dedicated to the town. I understand it should be, but that's, I'm just asking the question because it's not clearly stated.
I remember we talked about that.
RED doesn't have any entree into the revenue. So why would it be, I don't, I'd be happy to put it in the agreement, I mean, but RED is being paid $1 a year to provide consultancy services. Where would it occur to anyone that RED was taking any money from the Opera House operations?
And in point 13, it says RED officers, directors and employees shall not be allowed to profit financially by or from any event which RED is the promoter, presenter or booker.
Yes, I think that does actually kind of answer Peter's question.
I think that addresses it, but I think Peter's right that the, the town's revenue.
It's wishy-washy and I'm surprised the legal beagles didn't pick up on that. I mean, to me, it would seem that they should have, it's a notation thing, but they would think that somebody would have put it in there that the revenue generated with this whole process is still, you know, reverting to the Town of Rockingham. How it gets there, you know?
And the deficits, both.
Well, that's what I said, the revenues, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, it says in there that RED should develop rental fees and ticket fees. What are the fees or, are fees going to be adequate to maintain or what happens if they're inadequate? Because right now we do have a policy with a fee schedule set in it. Town's adopted that as of 2015. I don't know if you've seen that yet.
I have. It'll have to be one of those things if we decide on changes, we'll have to go back through the committee and have a conversation and.
Maybe that would be a good agenda item for the committee.
Right.
You know, because in the past, there's been deals made and things haven't quite covered the expenses. So I'm just leery that, you know. Now also.
Now, now, wait just a second. What are you leery of, Peter? Let's, let's be specific.
Well, right now, there's a policy in our books that states how everything's supposed to work in this theater. It was adopted by the select board in 2015. It also has a rental schedule in there and it says that you guys are going, now RED is going to be able to negotiate rental fees and sticker fees. My concern is that are we, are we going to be lowballing these things or, I mean, are they going to go by what's there? Do we have a minimum that we're supposed to be getting to do this? I know that we had a problem with MSA at one point when they wanted to do a production here. One of their rental fees were for all the stuff they're doing, their rehearsals, all the changes they made to the stage upstairs and everything else. All that time was supposed to be included in rentals and there was something like an agreement of about $17,000, I think I remember.
No.
That kind of went in the basket, so.
Peter, you want, do you want to remember or do you want to, do you want to blueberry?
Back again, Charlie?
The, the previous contracts with MSA were negotiated contracts and they were signed and agreed upon. The last time, the Chicago deal was $9,000 and that took in the rehearsals and the performances. Yes, that is a negotiated, that is a negotiated deal. That's an extraordinary situation where you have a community organization utilizing the Opera House for an extended period of time. The posted rates would not really be germane at that point. In terms of outside renters, in the past, under town management, there were indeed any number of lowballed, off-the-books uses of the Opera House. We are being very careful and Jen can, Jen has been through several iterations of people working the Opera House. If Jen feels like we are, I would love Jen's perspective to see if she feels like we are being more consistent now and being more conscious about trying to maximize revenues for the Opera House than we've been in the past. I think we're on a very good trend. I think we're being far more financially careful than has been in the past and I'm proud of the job we're doing.
Okay. The current policy states that there will be a town representative at these events to make sure our things are run currently. Currently now, your proposal, this addendum states that the LEC is going to be responsible for that. Is there?
The LEC is the town representatives, Peter.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, and go ahead. I'm just answering. You're asking, I'm answering.
Don't get excited, Charlie. Don't get excited, Charlie. I'm not trying to be negative.
Oh, no, don't get that excited either, Peter. And I know you're being positive. You're being so positive.
Okay, now the other thing is that you mentioned memberships here. How is that going to work, Charlie?
We don't know yet, Peter.
Well, no, just right now you have friends of the Opera House, I guess, or whatever they call themselves now, that, that they can buy seats or chairs or something, I guess. And that's how they get there.
Peter, I didn't come up with that. That's, that's previous iterations.
I know that. I'm just asking you if this is going to be comparable how you're thinking.
No, what I envision, no kidding around, I envision, one of, one of the components that the Spectrix, Spectrix system allows is membership. I think people are really, have a real tie to the Opera House. And I think that that is something that can help alleviate the deficit that the Opera House has always operated under. In the past, the idea was floated between 2006 and 2009. The person who was the Opera House coordinator, the position that got eliminated in 2013, that person was charged with attempting to have like, to establish a membership program and have it like an annual party at the Opera House. That never has happened. One of the great things about Spectrix is that we will be able to offer, if people wish to be members at various levels, which could have concurrent benefits to them of either discount for events where we could control what the ticket price is or, you know, it's just a potential revenue generating channel that really, at this time, we have not spent any time figuring out what that would be. It's really looking, you know, that's, that's a bit down the road, but I am confident it will happen.
Okay, well, that answered my follow-up questions to that about members getting discounted rates for attendance at venues. Because right now, Pen Tangle does the same thing up there in Woodstock. If you remember, you get a discount rate, which could cause some issues, but I guess.
Yes, no. If, if we're doing first-run movies, the issue that that, that brings up a problem with the first-run movies. And so we would have to have, the studio does not care whether or not we're offering a membership. So that needs to be brought into it. If, if there's a membership at, say, $50 a year, it can't be that you get 10% off as many movies as you want to go to. It could be that you get, you know, two free tickets to a first-run movie during the year and that's a cost we would have to back out to give to the studio. But again, that's all a ways down the pike.
Okay, no.
You know, but it's, it's all being very, it's, it's being considered, Peter. It's, it's, it is, the team we've got, Jen and I talk virtually every day about ways we can make this place work. And it's an exciting time. It's a scary time. It's a challenging time. But I really feel good about the direction that we're all facing internally.
Okay, appreciate all your answers, Charlie. One final one. How many keys are we going to be handing out to this building when we get up in operation? I know in the past, there were so many keys out, nobody, to this building, nobody knew who was coming and going and then that was, that was further. And it really became a problem when the TV stuff was stolen out of here because nobody knew how they got in other than the fact that the door was unlocked. So.
I would, how would, how would, I'm sorry, that's not my wheelhouse, Peter. I can't answer you on that. You have, what else that? I just, I, why would I, I don't hire and fire people.
Okay, well, you know, it's just a concern that needs to be answered because I know that that's, that's been an issue in the past that, you know, I mean, emergency entrances were blocked. Scott and I have talked about this anyway, you know, after the shows and in the, the doors were left unlocked and stuff there, you know, when the show's over, everybody goes home and drops, drops everything where it lay and there we go. So, so I was just, just a concern, that's all. Trying to avoid that in the future.
I've got a couple of questions, Peter, if you're done.
The only, this RED four, addendum four, the only, the only thing I had the question on, I was not very comfortable.
There isn't an addendum four, Peter.
I know it. I know. Scott says that they're going to drop that, but just over a future, if you ever get to that point.
What point? If we ever get to what point?
The goal's there. Number nine.
Is it in this agreement?
Well, I don't know. The agreement starts off saying there is an addendum, but then Scott said there's not one, so it's being dropped currently for this discussion, so. But on that, if you read the old one that was handed out.
Peter, why, if you're concerned about time and things, why are you bringing up an addendum that isn't in the agreement being voted?
Because the addendum starts off mentioning there's an addendum number four and he wants us to approve it. Wait a minute, Charlie.
Wait a minute.
Charlie.
Oh, Peter.
Charlie, let me speak. You're not listening to what I'm trying to tell you.
You're not listening to what I'm trying to tell you, Peter.
I heard what you said. I heard what you said. You're asking me why I'm questioning where there's not, I'm questioning about an addendum that's not part of this, but your first paragraph or the second paragraph of the agreement states there's an addendum four. We don't have one.
Peter, we also answered that early on and I own it. I said it is my mistake. There is no addendum four.
Okay, that was a mistake.
So, so then, so, so we're, we're, we're supposed to just throw this thing out, the, the responsibilities for TOR and RED and the goals is out the door now? Is that what you're just telling me now?
So the document needs to be redrafted, right?
No, just strike, just strike that paragraph and then you still have three addendum.
Okay.
Right.
Strike.
Strike whereas, the last whereas clause.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. All right, Peter, can I ask a couple of questions?
I'm, I'm done then. I'm not going to press it. People are getting nervous here, so.
All right. This is for Scott perhaps. Can the shuttered venue grant money be used to reduce the operating deficit?
We can pay some operating costs with that, including some of our salary costs. So that can be an offset.
Great. That's, that's really good news.
Yeah.
And you've mentioned falling plaster. Since the, the roof covers the theater, can we use SVOG money for the roof repairs or not?
That's a little bit more involved because of the rest of the facility. We did do some repairs that I believe since the last time we did them, we sealed up some areas and changed a few things up, up on the roof itself. And I don't think we've had any more water since then. So I think at least temporarily, we've solved the problem. We still need a new roof within the next couple of years. That's going to be a longer conversation at a budget discussion as we get into, you know, those numbers are much larger than. But right now, we don't seem to be getting any water. And so I think we're okay.
Great. Thanks.
Mike, did you have anything you want to mention?
Um, I don't think so.
I guess the only other piece, Peter, I'll bring up is, we have been, Charlie had mentioned, we're, we're trying to track some of our performance just to see how we're doing with our current operation. So we're not at break even. We're, again, running a little bit of a deficit from our current, this is, I think, current up through, Charlie, what movie did this one end at? Was this up through the Black Widow or was it past Black Widow? I don't remember the spreadsheet. How far we went?
I don't actually remember off the top of my head. I can give you what the average attendance has been, you know, for, it, it was per month going from through July, I believe.
Right.
I've got, I've got pretty good total box office. And it, it's continued to lag. It's, it's continued to lag.
So we're still running a little under a break even just from a pure operations standpoint, which does not take into consideration, and Peter has pointed this out, that we are still subsidizing capital expenses. We're still subsidizing utilities and we still have debt on the facility that was from a previous renovation that this is not covering as well. So I don't want it to be, when I, when I say we're, we're almost at a break even with those caveats, just from a pure operational standpoint, we do have some numbers with our first, first run movies that are a little bit of a concern and that's a national concern. We'll see how we're going to do with these live events and hopefully we can get more and see if that helps our bottom line. And, you know, again, if the environment changes and we don't have more variance and people are less COVID averse and we get more comfortable doing larger events indoors and bringing larger crowds, maybe we'll see some change in our attendance. But that's all speculation and, you know, I just, when you look out in the crystal ball, it's really hard to see how that's going to go. So we'll have to, you know, keep an eye on that. And as we go through the budget process, talk about those things and then talk about our long-term investments in, in some of our facilities like our roof and updating our plaster. And there's some other items that I think are, you know, more costly that we'll have to talk about.
Right. The, the thing I would really point out is that the eight ball that we're behind is that first run movie attendance so far has been, it was 39 when we did this spreadsheet, is the average number per screening. And as of last week, there's some new figures that have come in since then, haven't been integrated into the spreadsheet. It was 38. But anyway, so let's say it's 40 people per show. In 2019, the average was 81 people per first, per first run movie. The classic films have pretty much stayed the same, but it would be a mistake to think that you could change programming to just be classic films because there's a limited, you know, it, it's not going to be like 66 people are going to show up at, at classic films if you had eight classic film screenings a week. You know, the, the first run movies have more juice, but the numbers have fallen off, you know, basically we're at half what it was, you know, two years ago. And I believe the figures are nationwide, basically we're, the, the attendance is about 60% of what it was. And the problem is that the studios have all moved to streaming within either simultaneously or a week or two after a movie's been released. So, you know, the, the world is changing, but we are, we are, we are giving it a good shot right now. And I really want to shout out to Jen and Tim and the team that they're, you know, they're trying to be really careful about staffing and, you know, inventory management. And they're, they're doing, everybody's doing a really good job.
Good. Great. I have a question. For our budget, we'd carried over some funds that were left over from last year's budget for a limited amount of time. How, how long do we have before that runs out and where do we go from there?
Well, we had 60,000 that we had carried. And if you can, you know, just looking at the spreadsheet, we're, we're still not through that. So we're not blowing through all that money with revenues coming in. And we still have shuttered venue grant money as well that can supplement that. So I think we're fine for operations for the balance of this year. Our, our big decision points are going to be the lighting package and how we fund our portion of that. And then any other capital work that we see, like the roof, if we have to really look at that as a two-year project and try to accumulate funds over a couple of budget cycles so that we're not looking at a staggering tax rate that people might get angry or upset about.
Is the shuttered, is there a limit to the time in which we have to spend the shuttered venue money?
I believe it was up through 23. So.
And has the money actually hit our account yet?
Some of it has.
Okay.
So you have any questions or anything to add?
No, I'm all set. Thanks.
Okay, so you, are you looking for action tonight to approve this amendment?
With, with that line struck about addendum. The final whereas, if you could remove that, yes, word references addendum four, I think the rest of it would stand as is.
And I also want to note that we should have a meeting of the Opera House Committee and I think the first item on the agenda, including everybody that's on the list. And first item will be sort of review of the, the rates for different kinds of uses, right? Is that something we've talked about?
Do you have a current copy of that?
No, I'd like to, I'd like to have one.
Would you like one?
Yeah.
It's on the website, though.
All right. So Susan, you and I should probably get together to call a meeting of the Opera House Committee?
Yep.
Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll email you some, some ideas.
Right here. I guess we'll need a resolution for the revenues.
So, that being said, I guess we need, not guess, we will need a motion to approve the addendum we have in front of us and authorize manager to sign said document.
I move that we approve the management agreement between the Town of Rockingham and Rockingham Entertainment Development, or RED, as edited in, in, in this way that the, the addendum for the last line in the, in the paragraph, leading paragraph, it should be struck as there is no addendum for. But otherwise, I think the document stands.
I will second. Any further discussion? Motion's made to approve the, wait, and seconded to approve the amendment, addendum that we have here in front of us. Any further discussion?
Well, here's one thing on a lighter note than what we've been talking about. Can somebody fix the arm on the one chair upstairs that falls off at each, each showing daily?
We'll, we'll put that on the list.
I'm sure we, yes, we can do that, Elijah.
Do you happen to know what seat number it is, Elijah?
I have no idea. I notice that each time that I sit there, I hear the clunk as it falls on the floor.
You should know the number. You're sitting in your seat. Okay, so we're ready for a vote, I guess.
Okay, hearing no further discussion. All those in favor would say aye.
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 Motion carries. Do you have a paper there to sign or?
I do.
All right. It's up to you. You can sign it and date it.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. Letter of intent to participate in municipal roads grants and aid program.
So.
Letter in your thing there and.
Right.
Mr. Pickup will explain everything. So you don't have any questions?
So DEC has a program where you can go out and supplement some of your equipment. In this respect, it, we, one of the items that when talking with Andy, that he was very interested in was this stone screener, which is used in ditching, which he was very interested in. The state will reimburse you 80%. So they have a listing of our required match, what the estimated equipment cost would be, and then they're 80%. So on this particular item, we would be spending roughly $1,180 of local money to buy a roughly $6,000 piece of equipment, which will help us in our stormwater drainage program and our ditching program. So what I need from the board is just your approval to pursue that piece of equipment through this program. And then we will go forward once you agree to this letter of intent. We'll then go through the process and hopefully be able to purchase this and be able to use it as part of our town roads program.
That being said, someone make a motion to approve the, so the letter of intent?
I, I move that we approve the letter of intent for the stone screening equipment as presented by the, by the town manager.
Motion made and seconded to approve the letter of intent to participate in municipal roads grants and aid program for a stone screener. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Motion carries. Note of interest, Charlie and Jen, if you're still there, I just want to appreciate your time tonight. Didn't mean to get you too excited. Just trying to answer some questions. Okay, item six, finance update.
So, thanks Peter. Working with Cynthia on our couple of items in our equipment budget as well as in our debt schedules and came across a couple of items that I just wanted to walk through with you, just for purposes of your information. And I will share this with Sue and with Bonnie since this came out today. Basically, if you look, you'll see in last year's annual meeting and in our budget that we had approved, there was a debt service line that was, I highlighted in yellow, which was a sewer line extension and it was a principal payment. And as you can see, the, the principal had been fairly consistent in an eight, 17,000 to 18,000 a year. And then for some reason, it was budgeted at $95,570 in the 22 budget. Went back through my notes. I can't come up with a reason why that was budgeted at that number. It appears to have been just a mistake, but be that as it may, you'll see that your debt service numbers jumped from 633,560 to 738, 620 roughly. So there is some additional funds that were available as part of the appropriation in the annual meeting. And that's somewhat as important as you walk through and we went back to 2016, in the equipment fund itself, which I had attached. So you'll see that there's a whole series of items here. So we started out with a, a rough balance of six, you know, you can see the $66,000. You normally had a normal transfer in as, again, part of your annual meeting or your annual process. In this case, we had issued notes for specific purchases. You'll see what we spent money on and then you can see the fund balances you, you know, as you walk through those appropriations. So you had a fund balance in 17 of about 85,000. Again, you walk through, you can see at the, at fiscal year 18, you had a fund balance of about 100,000. And then you walk through and you can see, 19, you had a fund balance of about 99,000, almost 100 again. Then again, you can walk through and see at the end of 20, you only had 15,500. It appears what's happened is in the previous years, we had authorized some five-year debt to, to pay for some of your equipment purchases, but some of that debt had not been issued. So what happened was they had just issued the payment directly from the equipment fund. That's why you saw the balance fall somewhat dramatically in 20.
Yeah.
And then when you go through, you'll again, you'll see in 20, we, we get down to the point where after we've paid debt service and bought equipment, you had a negative balance in the fund of negative 30,522. Again, as we had previously stated, that was supposed to, some of those items were supposed to have been paid for with borrowing. That's how they were originally presented as part of a five-year capital, but they were paid for basically with cash. So, and the good news, bad news scenario is, and the good news is you didn't have the borrowing, so it's not carrying forward. The bad news is it left you in a, in a deficit as you went into this current budget year. So then what you see in front of you is you'll have, so far I have not, you just have your annual transfer. Two items that we've already discussed that we, that we're pursuing is, the one is the used truck, which will be our snow truck, which is the roughly $67,000 purchase once, once you have the delivery of our used 2005. And then we also ordered, because of the long lead times, the crew cab, which is also part of our snow and plowing, so winter operations. And that one, we had ordered in July because we were not even guaranteed that we could get it in delivery in time for snow season because they're so backed up on inventory issues with supply chain. So be that as it may, once I, once I apply that to what you'll see here, you'll still, you'll end up with a, a positive cash balance in our equipment fund for the year. And we still have some additional money because we had over appropriated the fund balances we had discussed earlier in that sewer line extension account. So you'll have some monies that'll be sitting there as well. Have no proposal yet on any additional uses or what you might want to do with that money. I think that's a, a conversation we can have as, as we move through the ARPA money and move through more involved budget discussion. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention because these are the kinds of things that have taken tremendous amount of time as we've gone backwards to try to figure out some of the transactions in and out of these accounts and, and why we're seeing some of the numbers that we were seeing that, that didn't relate to what our understanding was based on the debt schedules that we thought we were working with. So it's sort of a good news. So it's sort of a good news, bad news issue. Like I said, the good news is, we did not issue as much debt, so we don't have that burden going forward. Bad news is, it did create that end of year deficit, which we're, you know, going to have to keep an eye on for our equipment purchases for this year. So the state program will certainly help with something like the ditching, you know, that kind of acquisition, getting a piece of equipment at 80% state participation is tremendously helpful. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention as we keep going through these accounts, and, and we're getting close to the point where I think we'll have a full presentation of where we are with our 2020. We're ready to hopefully meet with the auditors and finance committee, go through all of our draft balances, and, and close out our June 30, 2020 information, and then everything for 2021 going forward will all be up to date as well. So that's still in progress to get us to a point where I think we can be comfortable with our numbers. And as part of that process, each time I, we run into these kinds of things, I'm bringing them to the board because I want everybody to see and understand, and certainly if there's questions or concerns, this is, you know, the, the opportunity for us to make sure everybody's on the same page, so.
Just, I don't know if this is correct, but I will tell you what I was told.
Okay.
The debt service line, sewer line principal, extension principal of 95,570.
Yes.
I pursued that to a little extent with Shannon, and what I was told from her was that that year is a five-year balloon payment that was due, which is why it's so big a thing. Now, I don't know, I have never seen.
I don't think it matched up to the schedule that Cynthia had.
Well, I don't know, I'm just saying, that's what I was, the answer I was given, because I thought that was really weird that it was consistent, and all of a sudden we got a huge amount. Sue, do you remember that, where we talked about that? There was a five-year, she mentioned something about a five-year balloon payment, the loans were, were set up on a low payment schedule, and the balance would maybe be paid off in five years?
I do, but I don't know the timeline on that.
Yeah, I, yeah, well, it's, it's, it's pretty well listed out there, that's why I was wondering. So, it may be, I don't know if there's in a, any paperwork that states that?
Well, we couldn't find a schedule that, that showed that, Peter, so we're still working on that.
Yeah, okay, I just, that's, I'm just saying, the information I received from, I traced it down, so.
Everything else so far, we've been able to pretty much verify. So our other numbers, I think, are pretty good. That's an issue that we're still not comfortable with, so.
Okay, I just, I'll pass that on.
Yeah, I, I thought the balloon payment was for fire trucks or something, no, not this.
Yeah.
I don't remember.
Yeah, like I said, we're still going through some of the schedules and trying to make a determination on that, because that, that one, we have not been able to verify. So we're still working on that.
Question, Scott, do we bid out, I noticed, I know that Craig Allen and Patriot are right down the road, but do we, do we bid these purchases, or how do we go about shopping?
This was a used truck, this is somewhat of a new process for us, because normally we go out and buy a new truck. So a new truck for this type of Western Star with a plow is about 155,000 to 165,000. So we bought this one, the used, with some warranty still on it, and we're going to see how it performs. So it's, it wasn't a traditional purchase as we would go out for bid or under state contract. The other one that you see, the, from Benson's, is under a state contract price, it's just getting in to be able to try to get it before build out, and, you know, with so many supply issues, and that's why that one was done in July.
That's for the crew cab one?
Yes.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah, we normally do bid out.
Correct.
Good, all right, thanks.
Yep.
Are any other further questions on the finance update?
Thanks for bringing that to the board, Scott, it's really important for us to see this stuff.
Yeah, and again, Peter and, and Jigs have been working with, with Cynthia and myself, and I think our next meeting will probably be with the auditors to kind of go over where that, where we are. And hopefully then, we'll have a more comprehensive report that we can then bring to the public. I think we've, we've been hesitant to make, publish all the numbers until we know for sure that, you know, that everybody's on the same page, and that, you know, then we can feel confident and have a, have a pretty full, you know, point in time, this is where, this is where we are, these are, you know, our fund balance numbers, these are our, you know, carryover numbers, these are all of our issues, and hopefully everything at this point, knock on wood, has been reasonably, as anticipated, like I said, the only one that we're still tracking down is this $95,000 item, which doesn't, doesn't match up to our debt schedules that we currently have. Thanks.
Okay, we're done with the main agenda, so move down to review and approve orders, bills, and warrants, so take a motion, please.
I move to approve orders, bills, and warrants.
We were seconded. Motion made and seconded to approve, review and approve orders, bills, and warrants. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, coming around soon. Review agenda items for October 7, 2021 meeting. We gonna have any finance, or?
I don't know if we'll have the full.
We shouldn't probably, usually we do that the second meeting anyway.
Right, I'm guessing, we'll, we'll need to have a meeting with them first, Peter, and I just don't have enough time between the annual, you know, this joint meeting and that, to get, to get everything done.
Rick, Elijah, you guys have anything you want to?
Okay, and that meeting will be October 7th or October 6th?
I think that's the first Wednesday.
First Wednesday, so it's the 6th, then.
I have the wrong date. Jesus, I do, I must have been using an old calendar or something.
Okay.
My bad, it is the 6th.
All right.
Okay.
The joint meeting is correct, though.
If, if there is any, any ideas that you come up with, just pop Scott an email, and we'll.
Peter and Scott, when are we going to talk about the ARPA funding? Is that something we're going to do at a joint meeting with the board, the trustees? Because you can combine it with what they may be doing for water sewer.
Yeah, there's, there's a bunch of VLCT and state programs going on in October, so I kind of wanted to go through all that with guidance, and then come to you guys, maybe even do in a special meeting in November.
Okay.
Because I just want to see if there's any other things out there that we're not aware of yet. There's a lot of guidance with this ARPA funding, and I just want to make sure that I give you very clear and understandable, you know, lanes of how this is going to go. So I think there's three different meetings in October about this, so I'll feel better about it in November.
All right, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, review agenda items for the joint board meeting. I know one is going to be the delinquent taxes or tax sale, so the villages are involved.
And we'll make sure that that's distributed, right, too.
So will we get a listing of those?
Yes, we're working on it now, it'll be done in time for circulation before the meeting. And then I think the goal at the meeting is to get your sense of, you know, I can ask our two different attorneys if they would give me a proposal based on the list that we're developing, and then we can even have a proposal if you'd like for, for action for going forward. At least you'd have some numbers that you could look at to see.
Okay.
So.
That list will, will let us know which are under, which ones are under agreement, and.
Correct.
Which ones have broken that agreement, so we know. I mean, that's, we, we've never gotten that, we've got a list of who's there and what we're agreeing, but we never were able to decipher.
A little detail on is important, as opposed to just.
Whether they were broken or not, because once they're broken, they're eligible for tax sale, they just don't kind of let things lapse, and three months later, they come out and decide to start paying again, so, you know, that's policy, our tax sale policy is that.
Right, we do have.
If they broke the agreement, they should be on the tax bill.
Plus, I think the agreement says, or our policy says, anybody that's over $2,000 or two years in arrears, it's also, if I read it correctly, but I'll, I'll make sure we have a copy of that as well, so people can see it.
Will we, also, I think you're going to give us an update on the why, or?
Yes, we'll have a proposal for demo, and then there's been, Historic Preservation has met, they had put together a memo about considerations that they'd like to have part of the discussion, so I'll bring that. We talked about the fire agreement, I think, that was a previous item that had been raised, so I can bring that. And then the, I'm just going to give you guys an update on the status of the BF Garage project. So those are the ones that I had open. There's others, I could certainly add them.
Okay.
Anyone else? Ideas from me? Anything comes up?
Elijah, your idea about saving the, the tower of the church, is that still alive?
Yeah, that's going to be in part of the, the memo from the store commission.
Right, we'll circulate that as part of that.
Great.
I think we just got that yesterday, one day. You met Monday, and I got it yesterday, I've lost track of what today is.
Right.
Yeah, recently, I mean, we just, just came through, so we'll make sure that that gets out to everybody.
Good.
Okay, let's move on to other business. Sue, do you have anything?
No, I'm all set, thanks.
Hey, Rick?
We got this cannabis policy questionnaire that came from the CBB, the Cannabis Control, the CCB Cannabis Control Board. I know there's a lot of history preceding my joining the board about the cannabis question, but I just wanted, they, they seek one person to respond for the town, and, and I just wonder who that one person should be, and then what the next steps are with the cannabis question.
Well, the history, as you may know, is that the town has voted not to have a cannabis retail in the town.
That was an election?
Right.
Okay.
I, I'm not clear, which is one reason I'm trying to get a hold of Debbie Wright, because the village is involved anyway, because if they vote to have one, then they're going to have to be the enforcing agency with the police department, et cetera, but I had planned to fill out that form, I talked to Scott about it, because Scott just said, you guys wanted to want to fill this out, send it to Debbie, and I have no response from Debbie as to what, I mean, I might get one tonight when I get home, but, just want to, I don't want to cross what they're trying to, you know, put in, if they are coming up with a no. My, my opinion is, I don't have any issues with medical marijuana, but recreation will have concerns.
Okay, so would, was there a town vote, or the, the Town of Rockingham voted on this?
Yeah.
I missed that one. How, how long ago was that?
Oh, must have been 25 years ago.
Oh, okay. All right, and, and the, so the, the current law doesn't change that, that's already been decided?
Well, there's a couple of factors that are important for this cycle, one of them being that you have to change or appeal for sales tax, a sales tax grant from the state in order to be able to gain any financial advantage from the sale. There's only certain communities, I think there's 17 right now in the month that have that ability, so you would have to then, I think London Dairy is looking at doing that, or something, I think, for a special town meeting coming up. We talked about that last year, but I, I never went beyond the conversation stage, I don't think there was a consensus to go forward and bring it on as a referendum item or a town meeting item, so it never got to a vote for that particular piece. And then I think once, once that deadline passes, and the next stage is this Cannabis Control Board, I don't know if that's the formal name of it, then starts to look at licensing from various communities that, that'll have opportunity. Apparently, there's guidelines as to how they want to try to award some of these locations, so they're, you know, even if you say you want one, I'm not sure you're going to be guaranteed that you're going to get one, kind of thing, so.
So our 2016 vote says that we're, we're out of the game, basically.
That was for medical marijuana, though, not, not.
Right.
The, the other thing to actually mention, there's an ordinance, I'm, I'm not sure if it's a town ordinance or a village ordinance, or a town ordinance that incorporates the village, that specifically states, you know, where they can, a, a establishment could be placed, that specifically states, you know, no, it can't be within a thousand feet of a school or church or.
Yep.
You know, public facility, et cetera, et cetera, so if you draw a circle around it, it's going to be someplace out of town, basically, around the village, so.
All right, and there's no tax advantage for the, for the towns that are doing this that have signed up? The state collects all the money, the, the municipality gets nothing except for the sales tax?
One of the communities have had the prior exemption from the state where they are allowed to share in that additional revenue. You'll get nothing additionally.
Okay, because it sounds like Bradler had that additional sale, the 1% additional, is that the same thing?
They do.
Okay, and we have decided not to do that.
Right.
Okay.
I know a bunch up in Chittenden County, I think there's 15 or 16 or 17 roughly statewide, it's not a tremendous number.
Okay.
So.
Thanks.
Jane, Elijah, you have anything?
Oh, one final question?
Yep.
Did we buy a drone?
We did. They were incredibly helpful during our storm and damage repair process, and there's limitations to the one that we were using.
Scott, I can't hear you very well.
Yes, Rick had asked me, there was an item on about purchase of a drone, and so we had been using a drone from the fire department to do damage surveys about some of the roads and some of the areas, and it ran into problems because it couldn't, it didn't have enough capability to go, for example, it couldn't go all the way to the top of Leach Road, it just, it ran out of signal and capacity.
Okay.
So we were looking at the technology, and the price has dropped fairly dramatically, so these units are a little bit more robust, so they can go longer distances and, and give us GPS coordinates, they give great, obviously, you know, you can record, so you can show the actual damage, and, and they were tremendously helpful for us getting our damage estimates in on this last storm in July, so.
Good.
We wanted to buy another one to, to really, and anticipating we'll need more.
Now, is it shared between the fire department and the highway department? Because it looks like Sean has signed off on this, or no?
They've, they've used it because they also use it to help with some property-related issues, so when we look at health issues or health department issues, we can use the drone to give us a visual where we can't always get on a property. So, and also, they've used it for search and rescue. This one's a little more robust, so you could actually go out and use it to, to look longer distances if you had to go out and try to find somebody.
All right, I understand listeners in some towns are using them, but that may be a controversial use.
I think we'll stay away from that. I don't want people throwing rocks at it, trying to knock it out of the sky.
The guy who built, who builds the equipment shed on his back 40 and no one knows about it, you know?
Listen, it's, um.
We'll see how many wing shooters we got in town.
It's a little bit of a Big Brother thing, but it has been tremendously valuable for these storm events and other kinds of events, they really are.
Good, thank you, that's, that's, that's interesting info.
So, no other business, so there's no need for the executive session tonight, so I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to adjourn this meeting, all those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We're done, folks, thank you very much.